We're going to start with Petition 977. On 20 Home Street.
The Halifax Zone Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 12th, at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selecting's meeting room at Halifax Town Hall on the application by Hassan Tanous and Carol Dowd for a special permit and variance to raise and rebuild a single-family home located at 20 Home Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Hassan Tanous, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, and Carol Dowd of 225 Gene Carroll Road, Abington, Mass. As shown on Accessors Map 65 Lot 4 Book 53326, Page 307. The applicants are seeking a special permit to raise the existing structure and rebuild a single-family dwelling to constitute an extension of a non-conforming use in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167-8C. This project would also be in violation of the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167-11, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, requiring the variance of the side setback from 30 feet to 8 feet. The area is zone residential and it is petition number 977.
Joe, where are you? Where are the engineering? And me is Hassan and Carol. They own the property at 20 Homes Home Street. Currently, I've kind of outlined it in purple where the existing houses are. This is one of the ponds. This is the 100 feet from the pond. There's also a vernal pool in that area there. We have gone through the Conservation Commission and we've granted an order of conditions, provided that we stay at least 8 feet from the pond. But currently, there's a deck right up to the pond. But what we would like to do is they would like to, obviously, demolish their existing house and garage and then build a new house, a single-family dwelling and garage. Basically, within, kind of in the same footprint. We are building a little bit extra to connect them to. We won't be any closer to the sobbing property line than we are now, which is about 44 feet. We're approximately 130 feet from Leonard Street. Their driveway comes in and they come in over from Home Street in that direction. So the only, obviously, other than the frontage, we have to ask for a variance on this side. I'm not sure, depending on where the frontage is, whether that's a real line or sideline. So it might be 40 feet, I think you said 30.
Okay, it's 30 to 8 is what it said.
Okay, so basically, that's what they would like to do. We do have some pictures, photographs of the house that's there now. Unless they'd like to say anything else, that's what we'd like to do.
Is there any way that you can place that house without asking for a variance?
No, no, even if I, this definitely is a sideline, so I only have 14 feet now. So I could come another 10 feet, let's say, just to get a little ready. But their wish is to be as, kind of, as close to the pond as they are now.
I think when you look at the pictures, it's nice. The distance, it's always a bit of a challenge.
You're going to combine the garage and the house together?
Yes, it's going to be attached.
Any members of the board want to...
What's on the other end of the property?
This here, this is dwelling, named by Lucie. There's one by Jordan Burris. And I think there's a couple of other cottages or houses.
On that lot though, that proposed house?
Oh, no, this, that's the only built, there's a little shed out here. That's all there is.
Any room to put the house out there, is there?
The existing septic system is already in place. So we have the Title V that they pump up to the hill to get it far away from the pond.
What's the total size of the lot?
2.16.
2.16.
So the square footage of the house is...
94,000.
Say that again, sorry.
94,000.
Oh, the dwelling itself. So there were two buildings, right? And now it's going to be one?
No.
Or it was two buildings? What am I looking at here? What's the...
It's a one-bedroom right now.
Now, one bedroom, yes. Two bedrooms. One down, one up.
So, oh, so, no. So it's currently two different, the purple is two different buildings, correct?
Right, yeah, right now, they're not connected.
Yeah, you have like a garage in the beginning, big garage. Then you go down and you have your hand in the back.
And so the, so I'm looking at one building, place of the two buildings, right?
It's going to be a house and garage.
And the garage is kind of further away from the pond. There's a line, right? So it looks like that's probably the garage section, the new...
Yeah, there's got to be a little breezeway in that garage, yes.
Yeah. So the... So this section here is the garage that we're talking about, right?
Yes.
And this section is the house.
The house is on the pond side.
So how much, and I don't know if it's, I can't tell. Is it increased living area in the dwelling without the garage? Or is it, is it pretty similar? Like, the footprint is different. It's probably better for the pond, based on conservation, right?
Yeah, it, I could, yes.
I guess really what I'm asking is not like, the square footage isn't really... I'm asking if it's an extension of the square footage. So are you increasing the size of the dwelling, I guess, is the question?
I think this is, what is it now, is it a story and a half?
It is two stories.
Two stories?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's going to be still two. So this is approximately the same...
Roughly the same. That's really what my question is.
I mean, it would take me to, I could do it, but you don't have...
No, no, it's okay. And the reason I asked is only because of the bylaw for the extension piece that was in there. And so if it's an extension, the garage is bigger. That's for sure. But the house living area is roughly the same. The changes...
Would be the breezeway. And the garage has certainly taken them.
Yeah, and very clearly the restoration. So the two sections of the bylaw that deal with, so the extension of a non-conforming use, which would be a garage, is the extension of a non-conforming use. And that will be the special permit that you asked for. And then the other pieces, the restoration is going to be more than 50% of the current cost.
Definitely.
Right? So those are in there. It's all the same.
You're going to complete remodel.
Right. But that's, the special permit is for that, that section. And the side, and the side, tell me, which side lot line is the 30 feet down to the 8 feet? Can you...
Well, I guess that we would...
That's what I'm trying to figure out too. There's so many different sides of that, so...
This is, their only frontage is right here, the 45 feet. So if this is their frontage, I don't know, somebody else has determined where the rear yard is. That very well may be there, or that may be a side.
Yeah, it's the side, so that...
No.
3 feet to each.
Side, rear?
Yes.
Yeah, I think rear. I would say that was a rear, pond to rear.
What, the pond on the back?
So there's no way to twist that house so you can get away from the pond, the back of the pond?
Well, there's certainly ways of doing that. This is what they would like to do.
Well, there's also that hill right there, it looks like in the pictures.
Quite a bank right here.
The topography definitely looks like a pretty big hill. That's, I think, setting to...
And so this is already a speed hill coming down.
I mean, it's sitting right on the pond right at the moment.
Yes, it is.
And they come in off of Home Street, right? Is that...
Yes.
So I guess, similar to Bob's question, I guess, is if, if the driveway's coming in off of Home Street, they're going around that vernal pool? Is that what that dirt driveway looks like?
Yeah, yeah, they come right through.
You have the grid and you have to go on two down, two right down.
Okay. And have you, have you considered putting the house, I mean, if you're destroying, if you're raising the existing house, have you considered putting that on the other side so it's further away from the pond, so it's further away from, closer to your driveway? You'd probably get more...
Footage.
Feet away from the side lot lines? I mean, even to the, and maybe you guys know...
That's his driveway.
Oh, wow.
Right now, you can drive right around the pond.
So was there any thought to putting the construction over where that shed is on the right-hand side? Is that because of the septic? Is that, I'm trying to figure out what the reason not to do that would be.
We already have the Title V septic right there, which is...
So that's the reason not to put it on the other side of the lot?
Actually, their utilities coming this way to...
Okay. I mean, it doesn't seem like there, even if you put it on the other side, I don't think you're going to get to 30 feet off the side lot line. I don't think you're going to get to anything.
He's kind of, he's kind of...
I guess that's my point. They're going to do a variance one way or the other, right?
It's really not changing much of the, the house right now is close to where it is.
If anything, it's further away from the pond.
It's going to be further away because the conservation is telling you to keep it back.
Is there a butter she didn't want to speak to?
Any...
Yes.
Do you see that, please?
In Marie McCabe, I have that 151 Little Street, I'll be a neighbor. And I was just wondering if the height of the new structure would be the same height as the existing one.
And what do you say?
Yes.
It's already two stories and it's not going to be any higher?
It's not going to be any higher, no. Okay, thank you.
Still see the water, don't worry.
I have a beautiful, beautiful lady.
Let it go away from you, don't worry.
Anybody else on the audience who wants to speak for this? You guys want to do a site?
Isn't it within 200 feet to the lake, you have to stay within a certain footprint that the house is built, and any building you build in there. And if you have a certain amount of bedrooms, you can't go over that amount of bedrooms. You can't extend the building larger than what it is within 200 feet to the lake.
What are you saying now? Is it in bylaw somewhere? It's a whole floodlot section.
It's been in, and in D V.
And they're more conservation now?
It is.
Yeah, they've already been to conservation.
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 We have an order of conditions for this, as long as we keep big feet from the top of the bank of the pond.
I mean, they have a logic as far as...
What's that?
They have a logic as far as where they can put it on the lot. It doesn't give them any kind of change. It's existing where it is right now. They're not, I think, demeaning conservation in some ways, I guess.
The way the house sits on the lot right now is ideal for them. And to get any close, any, can't get any further away from it. They don't have the room to do anything else.
And your connection between the house and the garage, you're saying it's going to be like a breezeway type building?
Yes.
You're going to connect them together and...
Yeah.
That's it, it's what, going to be exactly the same. It's not going to be changed. The spot in the middle is going to be garage.
Sure.
You could hide the car and that's it.
So there's not going to be any changes, so...
Okay.
There's not going to be any changes, from what I heard. Right? There's not going to be any changes from what I heard, from the previous, from the marriage. To the house. Thanks for being...
It's not, it's going to be garage.
And then the breezeway to the house.
Yeah, it's going to be the house and the garage.
Yeah.
Now, currently, there's no building between them.
Between them, yeah.
It's not, yeah.
Pretty much, Brian, she's...
Yes. What's that?
Second spade? I wouldn't mind seeing the other half of the property. Sometimes it's beneficial seeing it present.
What is it? Physical, is it?
Floodway designated flood boundary, it's flood insurance rate map.
It's been, it's been there following...
I agree.
I mean, it's...
I'm trying to make sure we're doing all the stuff we're supposed to be doing. Amy, did you see that somewhere? Do you know where that is? Like, I've heard it before, but I haven't seen it. So I just don't know if it's a zoning bylaw thing or if it's somebody else that...
Instinct and environmental protection.
Okay, which they'd have to probably file with, or...
There we go.
That's what I figured, right? I don't want to dismiss what you're saying. I just don't know if it's...
Just making sure.
Yeah, like, I'm looking at the zoning stuff, I'm trying to find something in there. I mean, it...
Is that a registered or... It is not, no. It is not. It's non-registered, not certified, no.
Is it protectable?
Well, it definitely is protectable under the, both the town act and the state act, but not certifiable.
Well, what's the...
I have no intention at all of filling in or doing anything with that. I'm not sure what...
Doesn't meet the criteria of being able to be filled?
I don't know, it's too big.
It's big?
Yeah, it's got good feet, foot deep, how deep is it?
I don't know how deep it is first. It's deep and it's thick.
It's pond, is that criteria?
Quarter acre per foot?
Yeah, quarter acre per foot would classify it as an isolated land subject to flood, yes.
Well, big piece property, you wouldn't, I mean, separate the house, like that, you have, I mean, if you take that room up there at the, in the side, you will put other room in the middle where it's the spot, and that's it. It's set. If nothing could go, and you can't do anything. You can't move it around, you can't move it like this. Can't do nothing. And you are away from town. And the bound, you drive around there like that. Or you drive straight and you go. It's already there. We did nothing.
But would the board like to visit the site?
We would like, we would like to go on an onsite inspection to get, to see what the land's like. That will give us a more, you know, we'll be able to give them the answer of what we wanted, you know, what's going to happen. Anybody want to make a motion to go on onsite inspection?
I'll make a motion for Petition 977 for onsite, second. We have to date certain rights, so to continue to...
Saturday, the 1st of October, then it's on the 3rd.
What's that? Oh, yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes of yes?
Yes.
Well, if we want an onsite inspection, we're going to visit your property and see how we can figure this out for you. And we'll come back next month and we'll give you a decision.
Do you want that?
What's that?
What time on October 1st?
9 o'clock?
I was just going to tell you, I'm not going, I'm going to be in New York City on the 3rd.
Is there any way we can, like... Stake it out? Stake it out so we can understand what's going on with it?
Yeah, I'll just give you a good...
And if we can go on the onsite inspection and see what's going on with it?
Sure.
As long as it's staked out next week. Sorry.
Make a motion, make a motion for Petition 977 to continue till our, till our third meeting.
7:10.
At 7:10, second.
You?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And I said yes. We're going to continue this meeting. We're going to go down to your place and see what it's all about. And then the following month we'll come back and we'll take a decision on it. I know you're pressed for time, but...
Yeah, it's been a while, but we wish to that, that both the type of thing is going to be, go through with the next year. Because you already went into the way. Is that easy? It's not like I'm not...
We'd rather make a right decision than a wrong decision.
It's easy to see. You walk there, can you see it? It's not any other choice to do. House right there, and this right there, and this all in this little spot.
But if we make a wrong decision for you, it's not good for us.
No, I don't want to make a wrong decision, not for them. I want everybody happy. What do you want to go on?
We'd rather keep you happy and we're out of trouble.
Maybe, maybe you go there and you see anything. Put it like this, don't put it like that, put it like to the wall.
We're not engineers, we're just...
Three weeks, three weeks.
When you go to the site, we get a better picture as to the hills. And we can say, okay, you can't turn, you can't do this. Sometimes, looking at a drawing, it doesn't give that effect. But as soon as you walk on the site and you see it, you can say, okay, now I understand. And then it becomes a lot clearer.
Me and Barra, I like, before, before I come in here, I make like a huge video, showing all the property, all the bad room, that bad room, that kitchen, that, that, that. It's only a problem if the house in good shape. I don't do it, I leave it and I fix it, you know what I mean? But not in good shape. That's it. The house is broken.
Well, we'll see you next month.
All right, we'll see you later. Before Christmas.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome.
978?
We have Petition 978, Bruno DeCosta, Colby Drive.
The Halifax Zone Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 12th, at 7:05 in the Board of Selecting's meeting room at Halifax Town Hall on the application by Bruno Sors DeCosta for a special permit for a two-family home located at 22 and 22A Colby Drive, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Bruno Sors DeCosta of 22 and 22A Colby Drive, Halifax, as shown on Accessors Map 34 Lot 77, Book 54892, Page 138. The applicant is seeking a special permit to turn existing in-law apartment into a two-family home for rent. The existing in-law was built predating the Halifax Zone bylaw, Section 167-7D-12, Scheduled Use Regulations, Specific Use Regulations, In-Law Apartment, Immediate Family Member Accessory Apartment, with a separate entrance, gas, electric, and septic. The applicant is not requesting any changes to be made to the apartment, the area is zone residential, and it's petition number 978.
I'm Luther, I would just represent her now. She's all of course, driving forward. And that's it. The house is already built with two houses separate. The structure is all separated, foundation, septic system, electrical, everything is already separate. And we just want to legalize it as a two-family house. And that's the main point.
Is there, the petition, is there a firewall between the two?
Yeah, the only thing that was, the only concern that they had, I forgot your name, sorry.
It's okay. Yeah. In my letter I addressed that, is the, in the attic, the gable end that faces the existing house or the main house, needs to be 5/8 by 1/4 sheet wide. And there's a small section in the basement on the inside of the house that needs to be 5/8 by 1/4 sheet. Other than that, everything else is a quarter, a quarter.
All right, in your opinion, this thing is, it's a duplex right now. And they're using it as a duplex. They've been using it as a duplex.
It's totally separate. There's no connection between the two units. There's no common area. It doesn't meet any of the criteria that we have currently as an in-law. So it's predated the in-law by law. However, it's clearly two separate units.
Is there a firewall to that?
There's, yeah, except he's got to do the, he's got to do the attic, gable end, and a small piece in the basement.
We just don't want to, in a couple of months down the line, so become, if an in-law apartment wants to turn it into a duplex...
My understanding.
And then becomes a nightmare. And we don't want to go down that road. You know, where we're coming from...
Yeah, it is, yeah. I'm just going to answer any questions.
No, no, I understand. Any members of the board?
Do you know when that was built? The in-law?
I think 1670s?
I don't know, it was in the 80s.
In the 80s?
Yeah, I grew up on Colby Drive and my friends lived in that house.
So it's always been a duplex?
It was built as an in-law, as an intention, its intention was an in-law. It's always been used for family.
Yeah, it was the first time around.
Nothing is shared, only the septic, right?
No. No.
Septic is separate, septic is separate as well. Separate gas meter, separate electricity. So everything's separate.
The only thing that shares is the water.
The water, they share the water.
Water, correct.
So this transferred ownership recently from the last...
Yeah, last year, she bought the house, yes.
When was that?
When was that?
Yeah.
March, May.
When they bought it, were they buying it as a duplex or they bought it as an in-law?
So May 5th, 2021, this board approved an in-law for this property because of a grandfather in-law. Now, a year later, less than a year.
Now it's a duplex.
It's, we're now, we're now trying to get it to be a duplex, yeah.
Was there inspection done in? I believe there was a letter in the file that they said it was two separate units at that point. And it was grandfather in.
But it was, it was an in-law. It was bought as an in-law.
They named it an in-law and the letter had it named it as an in-law.
They named it as an in-law?
Yes. Is that reworked?
No, we moved it to an in-law. A grandfather.
Well, I'm just letting you know what, as I recall...
We're just trying to expand this so we can...
Yeah, so the letter that we gave...
I'm talking about a letter that was written by a previous bill inspector, T.O. Boyer.
Oh. The problem was that to do with this, right? Yeah, so the, it's proved, isn't it? Because it was grandfather. If I remember correctly, I remember us being like that a little bit. I don't know where she's to it, but...
However, it doesn't meet the criteria at all.
No.
I mean, it's kind of a unique situation, where everything is separate.
Yeah, do you have any questions?
No questions, concerns?
Being a duplex surrounded by single-family homes and what's to stop somebody else's in-law wanting to convert it to a duplex also?
I think it opens the door to...
I think it opens the door to a lot of people. I mean, it does, but you're looking at a huge cost. They have to have separate, uh, septic systems.
Septic systems.
Not necessarily. If they want. Every, every application stands on its own merit.
Right.
This way, this one here has been in the making for a long time. It's been a dupe, used as a duplex for quite a while, since the 80s, I guess. What do we do?
As an in-law, right?
You know, I would say you put a deed restriction, they can put a deed restriction on it. They can't sell it as a two-family. I mean, they can sell it as a two-family, but they can't subdivide it as a condo. But you don't want that situation to pop up.
That's, that's what I'm aware of, you know?
If you put a deed restriction on it and says they cannot sell each individual side separately to two different bodies, then you're covered. I mean, that's just a.
No, I know. Three years down the line, they want to sell the.
They gotta sell the whole biggest one. They can't, they cannot. They put a, they can put a deed restriction.
Would agree to have to put a condition on it.
Make them put a condition that's a deed restriction, they cannot condo the building.
That's not the, uh, that's not the intention for the future to, but yeah, that's not a problem with us to put something that we say there. We can sell as family.
So the intention, my understanding is to rent them as apart, right?
Yeah.
That's why you want that?
Yeah, to be legal, yeah. We want to have that as a legal two-family house. So that is not a problem if the intention to rent or something, we don't want to have a problem with that.
So isn't it how we do up in doing it right now? But it's still going into different, two different families?
No, no, but that's different. I, I, we, the intention also rent for, we are letting family live there because there is two houses in there.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a, we don't stop family.
Have you talked to any of the butters? The butters, the neighbors?
Um, no, we haven't. In the process, you guys had to send a letter or something, but we didn't personally talk to them.
Was it they went to sell it and you just kind of said something to them that, or is that the one over here? It's been years ago, they're all blended together. So, so it's, it is, it sounds like a duplex according to the definitions within the bylaw. Even if it's not a duplex, it sounds like a two-family according to definitions of the bylaw. In both of those scenarios, it doesn't qualify as a multifamily in any way because it's not three dwelling units or more. So it's two dwelling units. Because of that, it looks like, and tell me if I'm incorrect, but I was looking at this earlier today. Because of that, it's, it seems like it could be improved by special permit in the agriculture residential zone if you apply. What, what, um, for me personally, and what I think the, the board has looked for in this scenario before is, is if it gets approved, uh, what that would look like, uh, what, what rights that would open up, kind of like Jim had mentioned earlier, what rights that would open up to selling the condo or divvying up the property. I think very important to me, I think probably important to the intent of the bylaw is, uh, the character of the neighborhood. If there are other like properties in that same neighborhood. And if the, how the butters feel about that property. So I, like, what I think the concerns that everyone has on this board and the concern that I definitely have is, this situation is gonna open up, uh, in-law apartment, uh, people who might have in-law apartments to come and apply under a special permit for either duplex or a two-family based on the definitions of the bylaw. I want to be very clear that if I, if I, as a member of the zoning board of appeals, my vote is going to be wholly based in each and every special permit that people bring this forward. Based on the character of the neighborhood, how the butters feel about that, the warrant of, of having an, uh, a duplex or a two-family, um, in a certain neighborhood, um, and the intent of the bylaw. So while, like, a lot of people are probably gonna pay attention to this, which is what I think our concern is, I want to be very clear to anybody who may be coming after this that, that we're gonna look at all of those things just like we're gonna look at this point. So we're not favoring one person or the other. We're favoring the existing conditions, the plans that are being presented to us, and the, the character of the neighborhood, which is what variances in special permits rule on that. Is that, is that, I worry a little bit about the fact, I don't want to be very upfront with you, because I don't think it was necessarily you involved in this. Seems like you're trying to do the right thing in this scenario. It sounds like somebody came to us a year ago, prior to selling this property, wanted to make sure their in-law was all set. And I don't know how they marketed it or put it out there, but it seems like now all of a sudden it's, somebody's applying for an in-law by special permit, which is allowed, um, but it's pretty rare. So, um, I think that's putting it all out there, to be very honest, what I, my concerns are about just this specific application and what the implications of that might be. Even though Kaziah is right, like, each application stands on its own merit, and there's no precedent in the zoning board. It's not always the case in popular opinion. So I want to be very clear about, I think, what our concerns are going forward and what standards we'd have for in-law applications going forward.
I understand, uh, but, uh, I know all the indicators of each case. And I think ours is already there. The house is already there, two from separate foundations, everything's two house. They're not connected.
And I think that's always been the case. But I think the concern now will be, that will be a rental property. And so for your neighbors and for them, their, their house values and for the character of that neighborhood, there will now be a rental property by right in that neighborhood. Where I don't, and we haven't even talked about whether or not there are other properties in that area or on that street that already meet that characterization, which I don't know if there are. So important to me voting yes on this will be if there are other properties in that same neighborhood or, or other properties in that general area that are similar to yours that are the same, which I don't even know if there are. So that will be a sticking point for me. Like, I, I know if I, if I bought a house in a neighborhood that does not have rental apartments and now they're being approved, that's something new that changes the character of the neighborhood. And so that, I think, is the intent of the bylaw, which is why I'm asking those questions and bringing that up. And, and very honestly, if it's an in-law apartment by design, and why there's a separate bylaw for the in-law apartment is because it's a family member who's in there. So it's not a random rental property that you have marketing online, or people are gonna drive by and check out. And it could be, you know, a kid from Bridgewater or somebody, you know, somebody with a full-time job or anything, looking at that rental property. So it does, it does change fundamentally the character of what that, that unit would be. So I think that's why I think there is a little hesitation going on.
And when you take a look at the house, two family houses, you need to look at the zone? Or is for the city of Halifax, all that works?
The character of the neighborhood.
You guys have two family houses already, right?
Most of that, most of that neighborhood is all single-family homes. That whole Colby Drive, you know, Oak Street, all that, all single-family homes. Now, you're, you're putting a, a two-family in there. And, you know, the light bulb comes out and says, hey, if he can do it, I can do it.
Correct.
It opens me from, you know, not doing it, you know?
When you drive by this house, you can't even tell, sir. I go by those.
Okay.
Okay. I think you guys, you have a sidewalk on first. Take a ride out there and check it out and see what you think. Because I think, uh, when you look at it, like I said, it doesn't stand out like a duplex or a two-family. It doesn't even look like an old two-family where they're stacked on each other.
It looks like.
It looks just like, it looks like they had a little small addition on the side.
Yes.
It's not, you know, whether we pass it or not.
And it's not usual and intrusive.
The people that are, that are coming along the line are in, in the.
I understand.
And they have.
But it's not a rental property.
What's that?
Maybe you have a rental property, and I don't think they're gonna care for the property the same way as homeowners.
Yeah. You know, the owner's living right next door. Check what they got.
Or what's to say they move on, buy another house?
They're good, they're good. But, you know, I mean, we can't live in the future.
There are other in-laws that were built before the in-law law on that street. And therefore, they would probably also come and try to make come and do that. Like Collins, it's houses that you, that was built before 98. There are others on that street that would come in to play on us.
In, in, uh, town.
Yeah, and even just on.
And there, and not to say there aren't duplexes in town and two-families in town, because there are. It's just they are in an area where.
Different, different area.
Yeah, the only thing that, kind of, we gotten interested in making it, uh, because everything's already separate, so we make the interest to come here and try to make a two.
Try and.
So, yeah, I don't know for all the reasons they have houses, in-law, whatever. But that's what we are trying to do, like, the right, I think.
I think we appreciate that. Yeah, so thanks.
Anybody in the audience want to speak to this?
Mr. King, there is a note from one of the butters in there, 33.
It's a big packet, just one.
Yeah, it's on the backpack, the backpack. The printing is very thick.
Dear sirs. And there it is.
Okay.
It's a letter from, what is the last name? It's from 33 Colby Drive, Halifax. Dear sirs, concerning 22 Colby Drive, as long as the DeCostas are living in the house and not renting it, I am not opposed to renting apartments. It's a light, it is a light front, but.
Yeah.
So you think to leave the house?
No, no, I'm just the boyfriend. I'm just representing, so I'm managing to leave because of family.
So you think both houses is standing in the middle?
The, uh, the nice house is about a dozen dollars.
So you, you, you have family living in the apartment right now, is what you said?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're looking to do this so that you can rent it? Well, obviously.
No, yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
It's not, yeah, but the main house is linked by, by room.
Yeah. The apartment, yeah.
That's a pleasure, I hope. Do you want to make a motion? For, or against it?
On-site.
You want to do it on-site? Come on, do it on-site.
I'll make a motion to continue petition 978 to Saturday, October, for an on-site.
Um, so, like, you're the one.
Yeah, it was at nine, right?
The first, so October 1st.
October 1st at nine.
It'd be ten, we'd all.
Ten, nine, fifteen, nine, twenty.
Nineteen.
Thirty. Is that right with you? I mean, we're gonna show up at nine thirty. If not, that's, we can move then, I guess. We just have to go for breakfast in between.
We can make some on-site, no problem.
Nine thirty, you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Nine, so four. Yes.
Myself, yes. We'll be at your, at your place.
Too far away. It's close to each other.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have to do a.
Yeah, also to continue 978 to October 3rd. Seven fifteen?
Second.
On there?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. 979?
We have petition 979 and, Meganus, Cellco?
The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 12th at 7:10 in the Board of Selecting Union Room at Halifax Town Hall on the application by Cellco Partnership, DVA, Verizon Wireless for a special permit for a wireless communications facility located at 92 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Michael J. Imano and Donald C. Cody, Halifax Nominee Trust of 40 Lone Street, Marshfield, Mass. It's shown on the Sessors Map 58 lot 3B, book 1, 8594, page 155. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a wireless communications facility for the colocation of antennas on an existing monopole tower with several other carriers, and replacement of radio equipment on an existing shelter inside of the existing fenced compound. This has been six, the special permit in accordance with the town and county of Halifax zoning by law, Section 167 4G, a remembrance of districts for wireless communication services. Area is zone industrial, and petition number 979.
Hi, good evening. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless and Meganus. As stated, we're applying for a special permit to collocate on an existing monopole. And just for clarification, Verizon Wireless is already collocated on the tower. We submitted a building firm application to upgrade some of our equipment. And it was brought to my attention that Verizon Wireless doesn't have an existing special permit on file. The application reads as, um, all of the equipment, even though it's technically already there, misses to swap it out. But so it does list the 12 antennas, six remote radio heads, um, one junction box, um, cabling, and then the equipment shelter, but everything is already there. And we're applying for a building firm application to upgrade. 12 of those antennas, swap out six remote radio heads, remove two small junction boxes, and place one large junction box there. And there's no changes to the existing ground space or whatever. So pretty straightforward, but I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Don't know what that stuff was, but yeah, yeah. Junction boxes.
I think Lady mentioned it's existing purpose in, um, we're operating.
More upgrading and, uh, just to comply with the, the bylaws and have special permit on file as, as one of the original.
Free service, baby, but.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Jim, this is similar to all the other towers in town.
Exactly, yeah.
Can't deny it.
No.
It's a courtesy for the community and the authorities.
Sure.
The tower is built on a special permit, therefore, any changes on their tower needs to be.
So how come they didn't have a special permit at the beginning? For the first time?
Yeah, I'm not sure. A lot of times the, so the tower's owned by Industrial Communications, although I didn't see one reported from them, to be honest, either. But a lot of times they obtain their original special permit and then the carriers are granted guilty permits pursuant to Section 64 of the Telecommunications Act because they're simply collocating on the tower, which is what that act is sort of intended to.
And how long has it been, just, have any idea?
Let's see.
Sometimes on your drawing, they might have a.
Yeah.
A day on it and then a change in the. I'm assuming it's been a while. It's something that hasn't, it's not new.
No.
Okay.
I'm trying to sell storage, please.
Okay. Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
You ready to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve petition number 979.
Second.
Um, do you want to wave your on-site or do you don't need to do that?
Uh, I'll make a move, I'll make a motion to waive the on-site.
I'll make a motion to waive the on-site, the petition 979?
Second.
You?
Yes.
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 Just waive the on-site?
I'll make a, yep, a motion to approve petition number 979.
Second. Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, myself, yes. Pat Ruth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion to accept the minutes of August 8, 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 8, 2022. Yes.
Oh, yes. You made a motion to...
The minutes.
The minutes of August 8. Can we have a second?
There wasn't one, have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Did you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. He's not tonight, yes.
We're cooking with gas the whole time, and then, woo! There's a crowd left, we got one audience member left, and all of a sudden, we're not paying attention. We're used to a crowd these days.
We have a correspondent, that's from email from the town council, requests for attendance at the EDA. And it was denied. Do we want to continue this, or do you want to let it go? I think we should continue it and put the pressure on them so we know what is going on in this town.
So he works for us, right?
He was for us.
He's for us, requesting his attendance and...
So I...
He denied it, and it's, to let it go, it's not, it's not in our best interest to let it go.
No, I agree. I mean, all we're asking for is, you know, is to explain what he's doing, what he's doing about.
I mean, the burden, proof is on him right now. Right?
All right, so who is...
Counsel?
Well, I know what it came...
What are we going for?
No, at the end, so we requested that twice, right?
Yes.
So we're gonna do it a third time.
When somebody, when somebody does something behind your back, you'd like to know why they do it.
Exactly.
And they don't follow the proper protocol. When we're following the proper protocol and they don't, that becomes sticky.
So my point is, so if he's working for us, and we requested him to come here, and then he refused, what is the proper channel to go about?
There is no proper channel left. Until we hire the new selectman, whoever they are, we have to go do the same thing over again.
That's a little bit disrespectful, huh?
It is disrespectful. They respect, they disrespect the zoning board. And they think we're, we're no way...
It's like, sorry, I was just gonna say, it seems like he is sticking to that you guys are just concerned about who it was. But I think you guys will pass that, we want to just know what the...
But the client, where attorney privilege is gone.
Right.
We have a right to know.
So I think I wrote an email to you guys, printed there. Do you want me to kind of clarify that to him, that you're not, you're not stuck on who did it? You're just, you want to know what you can do from that?
Moving forward.
I, I, I'll be honest, from my perspective, it's very clear that he's not interested in engaging with us at all. And at first opportunity, I think the zoning board should move to seek a different counsel. And I think we should bring Amy back in here like we wanted. We were not consulted about this. We were not offered any input about this. And the end result is that we now have an attorney who we've asked for months to come just to answer some of our questions. And the responses we get are to the point, but also the basic. And so, look, I personally feel like, I mean, my biggest frustration in this whole scenario is that we have a member of the board who is having one-on-one conversations about other members of this board with the town council. And the town council didn't reach out to those members to let them know. So there's a trust factor there that was destroyed. And he'll probably watch this YouTube video too, so he'll see that. But I would vote yes on every motion to remove him as the zoning board counsel and bring back Amy Questle, who's an outstanding counsel with the zoning board appeals at the first opportunity. But we're hamstrung in the current situation because of what's happened in the past. So as soon as we have a board of selectmen that is full, I think that this zoning board should, and I would make the motion to do it. I don't know if now's the time to put it on Jonathan Sealy to figure out. But as soon as we have a full board of selectmen, I think this zoning board appeals should move to have our own counsel that is not in cahoots of whoever the heck wants to be in cahoots of. So, like, he's been our counsel before. He's been to our meetings before. I don't think he's a bad attorney. But something is in his head about this zoning board of appeals. And even if it's not, I don't have trust in him because of what just happened over the last few months. Bizarre. And the fact that he won't even come to our meetings to say to us in person, I can't answer that question, is...
When the selectman did not give us the, 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 for the people that are supposed to be on the zoning board, that were picked by the zoning board, that were interviewed by the zoning board, and they were sent to the selectman, the selectman, okay. They overstepped that bond, and they went through, the selectman took that authority from the zoning board to do that, which is, that's why we ask for a protocol. And so we know, we always, the zoning board, not we, I mean, the zoning board always interviewed the people, sent them to the selectman, and they said, okay, yes, and, yeah. But 90% of the time, they said yes. And the people that never came up, but they didn't want to be on the zoning board. And that's, that was in the past. And last regime just kind of ignored everything. They ignore us like they're plague, you know? And it's not right. We want clarification, we want to know where we stand and how we will follow. So.
Do you want me to present that to Jonathan, like in the form of a letter, request?
Right now, right now, until we have a full selectman, you know, our hands are tied.
Yeah, now's the time. Now's the time to ask him to do that.
The full guy by himself.
And in the reality, I mean, it's, we're getting along without him, without the assistance of the attorney, so, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we don't know. We'd like to, clarification on it. Even though it was just for that, we might want to ask him something else. It's just not that's one question that we wanted to ask. Peter has something, each one of us has something.
Right, right.
You know?
An open conversation.
Right.
And that's the only thing we're not getting, so. I'm unimpressed, but that's okay.
Not professional.
Yeah, right. If somebody gets a show to me, I show to them when I get.
Could you guys accept the bills?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Oh, you need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bills for the Express newspaper for $270. Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, myself, yes. And the bylaw study.
Okay, ooh!
New news.
Yeah, well, this really, we're down to six members because Bob Ross resigned a while ago because of work. He's had problems, he's been on the road a lot. And timing just hasn't worked out. And he was a good member too. He was very thorough with everything that he looked at. And of course, Ashley was appointed by the selectman, so she is not, it's an appointment, so she's not there. Gordon Andrews is appointed by the planning board, but he's also looking to be a member of lodge. That would, he would just remain on the board as a member of lodge.
Without the signature.
Yep. So we've, we have to wait until the, obviously, the selectman, until we have a selectman so we know who can be appointed. But we are moving forward. What we're trying to do is to eliminate a lot of duplication throughout the bylaws and try and use the use table as really the benchmark. You've got to go through the use table, and the use table will tell you what you need to know so that you're not going from this section here, and then four pages down, it says something else, like we know. You know, definitions are different, and we have to get that cleaned up so that there's not confusion. And I try to mention that a lot, is look at, this can't be, it has to be definite. You can't say here, one sentence that sounds like, oh, okay, we can do that. And that's, oh, no, no, it really means over here, you can't do that. But that's not the way you read it. And that's not, that's not the way it should be. It should be distinctive, you know, it should be, boom, here it is. Here's the use table, here's what you can do, and here's what you can't do. Not four pages down. And we're trying to really clean up the sign section. I mean, the sign section is like 20 pages long. I mean, we should have a small use table for just signs alone and say, here's what we're gonna use for a typical sign or whatever you need, and try and clean that up. And we're trying to take all of the stuff for wireless, take it out of all the different locations it's in, and keep it in the one section that it is in. And the same thing with conservation and a bunch of other stuff. Just get rid of all the duplications that are going through it so someone can point, well, over here in this section, it says I can do this. But in reality, the real thing is, no, you can't. So we're trying to get rid of the things that, and it's gonna take a lot of time. And we started to do a little bit tonight. And what we're trying to do now is do something ahead of time before we send it to the lawyer. Because otherwise, he's usually saying, here's what I think you should do. And then we have to kind of go through everything he's saying. It's just, that's really not what we want, is we want to do this. So it's gonna take a little bit more time, but I think it's kind of, we're getting, trying to get a little more proactive as to what we're sending out. But that's where it stands. Don't expect anything quick.
It's gonna be a lot of work.
We probably won't see anything until the spring that we can actually really talk about. And it's gonna take some time.
So on your team, do you have any member of the community?
On the community, we did. You can certainly, if you, well, so we already got two members from the zoning board there. There's two of us that are on it. Tina's, Tina hasn't been there, she wasn't here tonight, but she didn't make that meeting either, so. Tonight's meeting was kind of a quick one that was put together to see what's going on. But that's where it stands right now.
So, another question. So do we, do we compare by law with other towns that's similar?
That's some things that we're looking at.
So therefore, we can have a better understanding of other towns doing things. And we don't say that we're gonna, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, so basically...
It's not much...
So they compare, yeah, definitely. Compare contrast and see where we are strong, where we are weak, and then how we can beef up on the places that we are...
That's what we're trying to clean up now.
Yeah.
And get, we want to get our bylaws cleaned up. And then we can look at, we can look at other towns too.
Yeah.
But for most of our, let's clean up what we have, get rid of the duplications, wherever they are, and trying to get it back to where you can understand it. So you can't have two lawyers looking at us and say, okay, that's wrong, I can do it, sit right here. And then you have another fight going, you know, which we don't want.
We're being the same, the same all three hours right now.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so it's time for something, but we can do it.
We can, well, we'll do it.
Yeah.
It'll be a little bit pointy here, right? We'll get it done.
Is that, well, you do booklets in there, could I?
Do a joint.
I'm just, I'm gonna, here, could you just sign that out?
I signed my name on there for something. I figured I did something wrong.
You gotta sign it.
I don't even know what I'm doing, but. Say please sign, is that, oh, look at, he's staring right at me. What I do?
Do something.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
You gotta sign too.
Second.
Oh, it's not, I have nothing to, I'm just...
Right now.
There you go.
Hey, you're on it.
Okay.
Now you're official.
Down your life away.
Oh, my God.
Now the lawyer can ignore your emails, too. I didn't know.
Did you send it?
No. Over a Facebook post, I get things to do. Personal D P?
Yes.
Yes, yes!
Yes!